And next week, students are going to begin to start to prepare for their IB exams, which start on the 24th, and AP exams begin on May 6th. Tomorrow, NHS, the National Foreign Language Honor Societies induction ceremonies are taking place, and we have over 100 students being inducted into one or more of these honor societies. I will be helping run the French one. We had peer leaders sponsor the Second Annual Spelling Bee today during community lunch, which was a lot of fun. As for the arts, this past weekend, the musical company put on our spring musical, The Addams Family. Huge success. It was a really great show, really fun. And coming up on the 25th is the annual district-wide art show hosted at the high school. As for counseling, this Thursday night, we have a mock college interview night for juniors, which was previously just for seniors, but we've adjusted it to work for juniors now. And 11 visiting admissions counselors are scheduled to meet in person with over 30 of our junior students. Most recently, counselors have been visiting sophomores in spring semester wellness classes to complete career inventories. And following the tuition deposit deadline, there will be a visit to senior social study classes to complete senior surveys. And the counseling office will also send their annual senior parent surveys out shortly. So be on the lookout for that. As for global citizenship, we have from the arts, again, the Festival of Arts being held at the high school. And film screenings will be added to the event from various film classes such as IB Film. I know, I think, one of my films is going to be shown off there. And lastly, for athletics, we will be celebrating 20 student athletes who will be competing at the D1, D2, or D3 level in August. In addition to the seven student athletes who were honored in December, we will have 27 Tusker athletes competing next year at collegiate level. So that's it for the student reports. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody here from PTA Septa? Nope. All right. Now we move on to public comment on agenda items. All right. All speakers are promptly identified themselves, a maximum of 30-minute period, limited to three minutes per speaker. No district employee or student may be commented upon or identified by name or situation. Questions asked by the public will be referred to by, to the appropriate staff members for reply at a later date or time. Questions requiring investigations will be referred to superintendent for consideration and later response. All written statements shall be given to the district.
Can everyone hear me? Okay?
Yes.
Okay. So, good evening, everyone. My name is Rachel Rabinewitz. I'm here today to represent the Citizens Finance Committee. I've sat as a volunteer on the committee for the past two or three years, even before my kids were old enough to really be in the district. I now have a daughter in kindergarten. And I just wanted to spend a few minutes providing information on the purpose of our committee and our involvement and perception of this year's budget. As you know, the commitment to excellence in education requires thoughtful financial planning, and as a committee, we have met over five times this year to discuss the budget and provide feedback to Dr. Blanch and Chris. The dialogue has always been open and interactive, and Dr. Blanch and team invite and are in turn very receptive to our feedback. As a committee, we take our role very seriously as we understand that we represent this entire Somers community. The committee is made up of board members, but also Somers residents like myself, who have financial experience and expertise. Personally, I'm a partner at a global CPA firm, but we also have many other individuals who have the requisite knowledge to provide meaningful feedback on, to the district. The ultimate goal for the district is to provide a nurturing environment where every student thrives academically, socially, and emotionally. However, it is understood that we need to balance the financial impact on the community and ensure the district is held fiscal accountable. As the district adapts to changing circumstances, whether due to high inflationary periods or other economic shifts and unforeseen events, they must align the budget with these goals. In our various meetings with Dr. Blanch and Chris and his team, we've reviewed the historical data, scrutinized all types of expenses, and together identified areas where the district can optimize resources. We have also discussed potential shifts in timing of capital projects and the impact of any delay on those on future purchasing power. It's evident in these meetings that the long-term financial stability and the need of prudent reserves are top of mind. The district is being very proactive in taking the necessary steps to reduce costs and increase funding to offset the impact of these inflationary challenges and tax settlements. For example, the company, the district has reallocated services to BOSs, like Edge Tech, whenever possible to allow to receive more funding in future years, and they continue to reuse COVID funds to improve our K-8 literacy program and have preemptively aligned declines in enrollment with forecasted teacher retirement as to not cause any undue disruptions to our schools, teachers, and children. While the environment is challenging and the benefit costs are increasing at an unprecedented rate in the past few years, historical budgets have been approximately $2.6 million under the maximum tax cap levy to minimize the impact to the community. We all know that our budget isn't just about dollars, it's about commitment to educational excellence. And based on my participation in the committee these past few years, I'm confident that the decisions made by Dr. Blanch and his team reflect the dedication to our students' growth while also considering the financial impact to our community. Congratulations to Dr. Blanch and Chris on hopefully another closed budget cycle. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
All right. Move on to the central office report. So we'll go ahead and start. We have two items that Chris and I will go back and forth. The first is obviously the proposed budget for the 24, 25 school year. And then the follow-up to that will be aligned to our element of excellence on fiscal stewardship. So again, turn that over to you, Chris. If, go up on the screen. Excellent. All right. Thank you, sir.
Just give me one second here.
So this will look very familiar to you as we've gone through, as we do earlier in the year. We do our non-instructional component of the budget, and then we have our instructional. Then we bring that together again with the support and guidance and feedback from our Citizens Finance Committee for a good amount of time and really some really healthy, good conversations, and then ultimately, we land here today. So, thanks, Chris.
Yep. So, like Dr. Blanch said, this, this presentation's not too different from the one that we just saw a couple of weeks ago. And I'll just move right on here. So yes, it's been a nice budget cycle again. We've met many different stakeholders, including that Citizens Finance Committee, many times. And now we're all the way up to the Board of Ed adoption of the budget. Here we are tonight. Again, all leading to a budget and trustee vote on May 21st. Just as my typical reminder here, when building the budget, it does need to be a balanced budget, so revenues and expenses must match. So again, we have our kind of largest revenues, property taxes and state aid on the left, and then some of our larger expenses, salaries and benefits, transportation. So this slide is just going over again what the proposed budget is for 24, 25. It's that $110,810,731. It's about a, almost a $4.6 million increase from the prior year, which is about a 4.3% increase. That use of fund balance and reserves, that's the, you see a large increase there. Again, going back a few presentations ago, we showed the, the historical use of our fund balance and reserves to kind of balance the budget, as we like to say, kind of shock absorbers each year. It's been as high as $2 million, and, you know, a little over a decade ago, it's been as low as $25,000, and it's been kind of everywhere in between since. And then the other big increase is the revenue non-property taxes. That, that $936,000 increase is mainly due to the increase in the interest revenue that we, we put in the budget for next year. We've been pretty conservative over the last couple of years as rates increased pretty drastically. So we're confident that we can increase those quite a bit for next year. And then you see the tax levy is that almost $2.4 million increase, which is a 2.76% tax levy increase. And the estimated tax rate increase is that 3.84%. And again, in the last presentation, we kind of did like a five-year look back on the tax levy and tax rate analysis. One of the driving factors for, for this upcoming school year is the reduction in the IBM property, which is lowering the assessed values for the, for the community, which then it gets dispersed amongst the rest of the community. And again, the tax rate is not set until August when assessments are finalized. But there's nothing else, you know, after this that we have to do for that. It's just the final little tweaks here and there that the assessor makes on the, on the tax roll, and then they'll, we'll get that number in August. Again, kind of similar side from last time. The only difference here is the anticipated revenue. The appropriated fund balance, we have it at 1.25 million, and then we did switch some over to the ERS reserves. So that ERS reserve amount that we're using to balance the budget for next year is the same amount that we used for this year, and then the appropriated fund balance is making up the difference.
Chris, can you say what's, roughly what's included in the special education piece? Because I know I ask this question every year, but I was trying to base it from the presentation on the special education budget when you did it by building, and, and then we had special education at the end. And I just wanted to make sure I understood, like, you know, what was in the instruction budget for special education versus what's in that special education pie specifically?
So the special education pie is going to be specifically anyone that's budgeted in a 2250 budget code, which is going to be your, you know, special education teachers, teaching assistants, teacher aides, could be some speech teachers, occupational therapists. That's going to be the, the bulk of there. And again, that number on the, on the pie chart does not include any kind of benefits either.
Right. That's going to all be in under employee benefits.
Correct. Yep.
That also includes outside schooling.
Yep. The special education also includes the added district tuition and maintenance for, for students.
Chris, the, the psychologist or, or language teacher, when they teach both special ed and regular student, are they separate in your college or here?
So we don't, so you said like a psychologist?
Yeah. How do you divide their time for them?
Right. For the most part, in that special education bucket, we, we don't really, we're not splitting up anyone that's kind of teaching both typically. Well, there's, no, okay, there's a few teachers that we do actually split it up. Maybe they're .4 in special ed and maybe .6 in general ed. So those teachers, we do split up, you know, and they would be split up in this pie chart. But like the psychologists and stuff like that, they're going to be in one specific area. Like the speech teachers are going to be typically in just one area.
So, so the special ed this section, this pie, is not accurate, right? Is approximate?
No, this is, this is the budgeted number, and it's accurate.
No, no. Number is accurate. I mean, representation of the, the classification of personnel is not accurate.
So when you say-
Because according to your explanation, the .4 or the division of these, these FE points may not be applied to everyone, every case exactly.
Well, I think you're saying it is.
Yeah, it, it is.
It is?
The teachers that are split up between special education and general education, they are split up in these numbers.
Okay. So, so this purple pie is exactly the special ed?
Yeah, that is exactly how we're budgeting for next year.
That's actually, is your question I think you wanted to clarify.
And actually, as, as Rachel mentioned in, in her comments about some of the inflation issues that not just us, but everyone has faced over the last few years, and then actually the next slide kind of shows that inflation amount, which we used at a previous presentation. This, the point of this slide is just to kind of show the 20, based on the 24, 25 budget of $110,810,000, we would need, the budget would need to be at this $115 million, $515,692,000 to have the same purchasing power as it would have had back in, say, the 1920 school year. So I know that wasn't maybe the best explanation, so let me try one more time.
1920?
So the 1920, well, the 2019, 2020 school year. I'm not going back 100 years. The 2019, 2020 school year, you see on the, on the right there, that budget was $93,677,000. If we account for inflation, the same, to have the same purchasing power as that did in the 2019, 2020 school year, we would need that $115,692,000. We're only at $110,810,000. So essentially, we, we can't purchase what we did five years ago for the amount of money that we have in our budget here.
Chris, I, I don't remember the number. So from 2019 to 20, that student population versus today, do you have that number?
I don't have it off the top of my head, but it has gone down.
Right. I mean, when you compare it this way, certainly we should also look at the student population.
Sure. And as we've kind, as we kind of talked with the declining enrollment, the, the needs and, the needs of our students have shifted. So we've, we've reallocated some of those resources to meet some of those needs of the students.
Yeah. Okay. We will compare that, yeah.
Well, so that's, that's what the 4.8 is showing, is that a lot of that reduction and things that were changed over time, the cost-saving, the energy efficiency stuff that you put in. So if everything was all equal, we had the same number of students, did the same exact thing that we were doing in 2019, 2020, we would need $115 million budget to be able to pay for that now.
That's the reason we can survive. I mean, otherwise.
Then this next slide is just the, just to kind of showcase again the inflation based off the previous few years. As again, you can see the last three years, inflation's been, you know, 4.7%, 8%, and 4.12. Again, that's why some of these costs are going sky-high. And then as you can see, the CPI, the inflation factor that's used in our cap, tax cap calculation is capped at 2%. And then you see where our actual maximum, maximum allowable tax levy limit has been over those few years as well. Again, two out of the past five years, we've been at that levy. The other three years, we've been below it, which again resulted in about $2.6 million that we did not put out for the community.
So what this is showing is we're capped at increasing our budget by 2.76%. But inflation was at 4.12%, so clearly, we're not able to compensate for the fact that how mu, we have to absorb all of that cost coming in from inflation that we are, we're not allowed to raise more money.
And the, the 2.76% is the, the cap for next year that we can raise via taxes with just a simple majority.
Right.
So we did account for some of the additional costs with the increase in interest revenue. But, I mean, if you look even just this current school year, I mean, our tax levy was 2.8% and inflation was eight. So, I mean, we're nowhere near that.
And we still stay below what we were allowed to raise, which was 3.59%.
Yep. And a large portion of that, those couple of years that we were pretty, we were well below the tax cap calculation, the maximum tax limit, was due to the fully funded foundation aid that we had, which we've talked about for the next school year, that the governor's proposal had some changes to that formula. Seems like they might be on the verge of a, of a, approving a, a budget from the state. But again, at this point in time, we don't have that, and we're, you know, we're two weeks past when it should have been due. So we can only go with the numbers that we currently have.
Right.
And just a reminder, if that does come to the favor of the school district, we will go ahead and reduce our reliance on the fund balance that we've allocated to balance the budget on paper. So if it does tilt our favor, then we will go ahead and, and reduce our reliance on that, just to let you know. Again, like Chris said, we're just a few weeks away from the actual budget vote. We keep hearing, it should be coming soon, but as of yet, not, not yet. So, last time I heard, just a, I sat in an, on a group with Lower Hudson FWC Council, and we're hoping by Friday. But again, fingers crossed.
Probably a good thing to note though, too, is the, the CPI and the inflationary rate is not indicative of the healthcare retirement plan stuff going up. It is not following with inflation, is well exceeding that. What the last two years is, what, 17% increase?
Yeah, at least for the empire plan, it's, it's well exceeded what inflation has been.
Yeah, so about 17%. I think the three-year average on CPI is, what, 5.6%? Right? So 17% over two years is massive.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you add the third year in there, now into the 20%.
Yeah.
So with that number, that support that we also see with the inflationary piece, we're not, unlike other school districts in the state, where that same line item in everybody's budget for the health insurance is, is the one that's really causing the biggest challenges. We would look at, we did earlier on the instructional and non-instructional side, our increases within the salary component there are much closer to the CPI index than is that one in and of itself, which again, previous slide up above on the pie chart, that represents a quarter of our budget. So when you see that quarter of our budget going up, that line item size, it's, you feel it, that's for sure.
Yeah. I did the math one time, it's about 2% and just that. Those increases represented 2% of the overall budget on the 25.
Just on that quarter, yeah.
And I know a big discussion point is always that our enrollment's going down, but our, you know, the, the tax levy is going up. I think it's important to note, just reading through the budget binder, it looks like we're only going down about 45 kids once we go through this graduation. So it's not a huge amount of kids leaving every year, and we do try to, I know that, and I think, well, maybe I'm spoiling it, it's coming up, but the, the, basically, even though we have been able to reduce things over time, overall, through attrition and retirements with the declining enrollment, because of the needs coming up, it really is just a net, we saved as much as we could, but there's still, still money we have to pay for special education services, et cetera, that keep increasing.
And all those costs keep increasing quite a bit.
Yeah, we spoke a little bit when we did the kind of analysis of the staffing kind of from pre and post, when that decline started, a net savings of, a savings of approximately seven FTE, but I think as the board pointed out before, that we had some FTE that came on board, for example, for ENL instruction and things like that. So the scope has definitely increased to when our population needs have continued to change and the supports align with ours. So it is, it is definitely a richer experience than we have right now than we frankly did before with our special education support, our second language support, our wellness support for all of our children.
Say, mental health, wellness has been a huge piece, but I think it's important.
In particular, counselor at the elementary levels and the secondary and stuff. My apologies.
I'm sorry. I thought you were going to-
And we've decreased class sizes, too.
Right.
We don't have classes in the elementary school of 26 anymore.
Right. We've really been able to stay strong to, in particular, perm rows at, at that number right around 20, and at times we'll have close, you know, may have 23 at the intermediate school, but not at a 26 number. So along the way, we did try to take advantage of, you know, bringing those numbers down to a little bit more desirable.
Just the employee benefits, I had a quick question. That's up like 3 million, right? Close to it?
Yeah.
For the year?
Yep.
Is that, what is it per employee? Does that fluctuate depending on the time that they've been here, or is there a specific?
Uh, well, so let's, for like a-
Average per employee?
Health insurance contributions. It does, if, if you were here, a little over, say, if you've been here over 30 years, you might contribute a little bit differently than anyone that's been here, hired since. But the overwhelming majority at this point, you know, over 99% has been hired after that change, so that's all pretty consistent with each employee.
Do you have a rough average of what it is per teacher?
I can get you that. I don't have it off the top of my head.
Well, do, do teachers have the option to do like a single plan versus a family plan and all that?
Yep, teachers, teach, every, every employee can do a single plan or, or a family plan. The PNW Health Benefits Consortium also offers just an employee plus one plan. So it's a three-tiered plan. The empire plan is just the, the two options. And then if, and then if staff does not, do not take the health insurance, but they're eligible for it, then we also offer a, a buyback for them as well.
So if, if, say, where was a teacher and my wife had insurance through her company, I took hers, we refund them?
Well, there's a, there's an amount that we'll give as a buyback to you.
Okay.
Yep. As a, you know, if you're eligible for the insurance, it's basically a, a cost savings if you don't take the health insurance for us. So we offer a dollar amount back to people.
Is that on, like a sliding scale, too, how much they get back?
Um, it's in the, it's-
Or is that one set?
It's in the teacher's contract, and it's a, it's a set amount.
Okay.
And then, Chris, also in here, we obviously have the TRS system.
Yes.
ERS system, social security.
Yep.
All those elements are also inside the employee benefits as well.
Yep, all of that.
So that adds it all up. Yeah. You know, I brought this up before, but there's really no other option for us. So there's no shot, you know, I know people just ask, there's no shopping around for a better plan. It's, we're just stuck whatever the state gives us or the empire plan gives us, correct?
Yeah, I mean, it's collectively bargained with the union, with both unions. If we were going to open that up, we'd, we'd have to negotiate that with the, with the unions. But, you know, we are, we are going to look at some possible other options if, if, if anyone's interested.
Okay, so we could, if the union approved of it?
If, if it worked for both parties, yeah. Because again, the, the empire plan has gone up drastically, so it's, it's not only becoming costly for, for the district, it's also costly for the employees. And even with the PNW plan as well, you know, if there's another option out there that we could potentially offer, then we'll look into that. But we, we'll have to just do a little bit more investigation into if that's a viable option or not.
Thanks, Chris.
Yep. And then these last couple of slides are just again on the contingent budget. Well, first, it's on the budget if it's not approved in May, then we have three different options. We can resubmit the same budget for another vote in June, or we can revise the budget and submit that budget for a vote in June, or we can, the board can adopt a contingent budget with no tax levy increase, and then no additional vote would be needed. If we did have to resubmit a budget for a June vote and that did go down, then we'd go to this contingent budget. And then here's just some of the potential contingent budget items. We're looking at, again, it's almost $2.4 million that we'd have to cut if the budget did go down. So, and there's only so many widgets that we can cut out of the budget. So unfortunately, it's going to be positions that we're going to have to cut, and it's going to be, you know, that everyone across the district is going to feel the impact of that. So the additional instructional FTE reductions, coaching positions, there's certain restrictions you have with, with the contingent budget, so no new equipment orders, again, unless it's a health and safety concerned. Same, same goes for any plan renovation projects. And then also limited use of the school buildings by outside organizations.
Are there fees for outside organizations to use the school?
Yep. Well, there's a-
Why would we cut those?
Because there's, there's certain, there's certain organizations that don't have a fee. Yep.
So it wouldn't be altogether, it would be the ones who don't pay.
Right. Anyone that pays can still continue.
Right.
And that's laid out in one of our board policies on the use of school buildings, and the fee structure's on there as well, and then the, the people or organizations that we don't charge unless there's additional cost that is being, that the district would And that wraps up the final budget presentation of the year. So our next meeting would be on May 7th, which is the public budget hearing, and then May 21st is our budget vote and trustee election. And again, two, two board seats, Heidi and Nick.
Thank yous.
Thank you.
We'll just let you roll.
And so if, if people want to go and look through the details of, of all the presentations and the budget documents, that's just right on our website.
On the website.
Is it under the Board of Education? Is that where the budget information, I think, is?
It's definitely in the, on the, it's on both. It's under the Board of Education, and then it's definitely also under the business office as well.
It's under both, okay.
Yeah, there's, there's a few different spots, you can find it on, on the website.
Good. Easier is always better.
Yep.
Thank you, Chris.
All right, Chris, this is, you go ahead and switch to the next one if it's all right, on the Foreign Excellence Report. So again, we're, just a reminder, the Foreign Excellence Report is basically built along the way through the school year, and we would start with, you know, our professional learning experiences, and we look at our 21st century knowledge and skills, whole, you know, whole child student, and, and if we look at today, we're looking at, I think on page 46 of the document on fiscal stewardship. So again, this is an intent, direct intent. Basically, over last year, we went back out to the community and spent some time talking about what would our updated goals and structure look like. These are the six pillars that we have identified coming out of that work. Walking into the project, we had a, basically identified four out of the six, but coming out, we was determined that we would create this as a new anchor for us in our evidence, our information era, providing evidence to the community, and transparency is on our fiscal stewardship. And then the last one that we'll see later in May is going to be on the family and community engagement. So again, thinking about data and information that provides the community with the board insights into the six buckets, our elements of excellence, this would be the place that we would direct anybody ever to. There's lots of information that's housed in here, as well as links to more detailed information as well. So we do have this up on the website, and it continually evolves because we go through six different meetings like this through the year, and each one of those takes a moment, as Chris is about to walk us through with the fiscal stewardship here. So thanks, Chris.
Yep, no problem. So again, just on the, on the left side here, that even just looking at that expenditure breakdown chart that you'll see is a little bit different than the pie charts that we just saw in the presentation. So this is just, you see that salaries and benefits make up, you know, over seventy percent of the budget, which we've talked about at many different presentations that we've had. Just that special education cost you see at three percent now, very different than the one we just saw at, you know, whatever. It was fifteen or sixteen percent because all the salaries and for the, for that specific department are now in that salary and benefits tab. So that three percent is really then your, your added district tuition and then any kind of related services that we contract out for. Our, our district, it's got, you know, obviously four buildings, about six hundred thousand square feet of space. We have about fifty-five acres of, of lawn and field that we maintain. Almost two hundred and twenty thousand meals served each year and almost seven hundred thousand miles driven on the buses each year. Then looking at the top right of that next page, you have the budgeting during declining enrollment. So what we kind of touched upon just a few minutes ago, where that kind of net decrease in FTE, that headcount is about seven over the last almost decade or so. And we've, over the last three years especially, salary increases have, you know, maintained around that two point nine percent. Whereas the benefits, you know, your health insurance and your retirement contributions, that has skyrocketed to up over seven percent. And again, that's what's really been hindering not only us, but other districts throughout the, throughout the state and especially the area. We talked about again, with the declining enrollment, but where we've also expanded the scope of support needed to support our students and specifically special education needs, English as a new language, the E and L support, academic intervention services, and then also wellness support that we've added over the last few years. And again, just as...
Declining enrollment is not unique to Somers. It's a pretty much overall statistical, statistical table that you look at, right?
Yeah.
To predict where things fall.
So we see all of the districts in Westchester County, I think, say five, and those are typically more into a city area that are having a slight increase there a little bit. And the overall numbers across the state of New York also are in decline as well too, so.
Yeah, just like I said, just like looking at the numbers, it's the declining, like people here declining enrollment, I think they feel like, like people are fleeing or there's hundreds of kids leaving. But it's really, you're talking like about a class size full, like forty-five, you know, forty to forty-five students a year adds up over time, but it's not like drastic numbers where you can start cutting teachers left and right.
Yeah, that's a great point. That's where, you know, starting roughly the decade ago where it was a slow gradual, you know, declining in enrollment. So we were and have been able to, in partnership with our teacher and our teacher leadership team, to tactically navigate when we know a reduction may be coming and we know we may have a retirement. So our teachers has been just fantastic allowing us to do that so it doesn't negatively impact the classroom. The investment that our teachers have made into the schools, we've made into our teachers, has not been negatively impacted because we've been able to see this coming. Again, we have a pretty stable enrollment, so that's been very helpful. So we know that we have basically about next three years, next year's junior, our sophomore, junior, senior classes, they move on, we're kind of basically at our floor line. So that would be a piece that we will be holding our, our numbers and it won't really be looking at any too much of a further decline enrollment. We'll get those numbers there, so.
And then the, go ahead.
You up forty-seven, top of that, we just recently updated this. The, I did like that waterfall chart. I don't know if it shows well on this, but that showed over the years, like the decrease of the FTE teachers.
Oh, and the Empire.
So what do you, what do you want with, with the waterfall chart? What'd you say?
Yeah, I think that would be, I don't know, if you're looking to add more content to the forty-seven page document.
You want us to add the waterfall chart in?
I don't know.
Okay, we can, we can look to see if we can...
Look to see if it squeezes in there somewhere.
Squeeze that in there?
This one?
Yeah.
And then on the bottom of page forty-seven, we have the athletic facility upgrades. Again, it's been a few years now, the voters approved us establishing the capital reserve fund largely to do these athletic facility upgrades. And then the voters last year approved us to access those funds. It was seven million dollars that they approved. And then we went out to, we had to submit the project to New York State and we had to wait for approval, which takes many, many months. And then we did get approval from the state and then we went out to bid and the board approved those bid awards back in December. So currently, we did some of the interior ceiling projects at Primrose and the high school over spring break. So that was great to kind of knock those out and the main, well, I mean, it's great to upgrade the ceiling tiles and whatnot, but also the main, one of the bigger reasons to do the project was to allow us to get state aid on the rest of the project, so. And then we're looking to break ground on the tennis courts any day now. So that'll be exciting to finally get a shovel in the ground and start to get mobilized over there. And then the plan is still to start the construction of the softball and baseball fields as soon as those sports end in June.
And as Chris was saying, just a real important piece as we have over the last number of years, decade plus, worked with our Citizens Finance Committee. One of the driving pieces is to, when we do make improvements to our athletic facilities, our, our intent is to avoid bonding any of that work. So you'll see here with this estimated seven million dollar project, there's a two million dollars in interest payments the community does not incur as we have saved these funds in our, in our capital reserve account. So we work with our Citizens Finance Committee, look at this, so they're needed. The desire is to, if at all possible, and we have been able to do that after this project. So again, there'll be no interest payments on there for taxpayers. And the last time when we had to go ahead and resurface the athletic practice at the, or field at the high school, that was again, part of a capital reserve project. So by avoiding that interest, that allows us to go ahead and do this work. And as we'll come here shortly, we'll talk a little bit about the next bond experience, which is a different envelope for some of the other projects we have. Chris did note our six tennis courts here. We are anticipating and working right now, we have, I think, an initial sketch back from our architect team. Three of those courts, the tennis courts, will be also duly lined for pickleball. And so we're working with that team right now to get those lined and get that stuff ready. I think Chris has got a community contact to make sure that I didn't line them out. So I think we're going to make sure that we got the right distances and everything there, so thank you, Chris.
And I was getting to the pickleball lines?
You were, I just, I feel like I had to say it out loud, Chris, I'm sorry, so.
So you can see on...
My apologies, Chris. And the kids at the high school, I bumped into a few of them the other day, they got the pickleball club. They couldn't be more excited. They're tennis players too, and they're like, so, and so they're pretty pumped about it, so thank you.
So on page forty-eight, we do just have a rendering of what we believe these tennis courts will look like. They are not lined in this rendering for pickleball, but the pickleball lines will be coming. And then we also have a rendering of the softball field and then the baseball field as well. And again, both of those fields will be full synthetic turf. And then they'll be getting some revamped bleachers and dugouts and bullpens and scoreboards. And we do have a video we would like to share from a softball player. Let's see here, should I hold on?
There's the details about the dugout. So you can go ahead and see, we're going to put the elephant on the side of the dugout, like that. And then you're going to have, you see in here where you put your helmet, there's a little boxy right there. So you come downstairs, put your helmets in it, and they will have a bench on foot so you can watch football too.
These are the two dugouts and then this is the left side, this is the right. So that's the main dugout and then one for the pitchers to warm up and then one for the batters to warm up. And then for the waiting, they have to share one.
Yeah. Wow, that's awesome. So what do you think? Are you excited?
Yeah.
Are you going to come and see if the old one is done?
Yeah.
Quite a bit of excitement over the softball field for sure.
You throwing the first pitch out, Chris?
I don't think so. So again, now just moving on to page forty-nine, we have the capital reserve account. Again, that was the same capital reserve account that we're using for the athletic facilities, so it was up to ten million. So there's another three million that could be placed into that account. We currently have about one point two million in that, that fund, so we can add another about one point eight million to get us to that three million.
And then you'd have to put it out for vote again to, to access that three million.
Right. And the intention at this point would be to include that when we go out for that May of twenty twenty-five bond vote that we're looking for, that we'll get to in a little bit. Then we got universal pre-kindergarten. Again, it's expanding for the third year in a row. We started this process with universal pre-kindergarten when the money magically showed up on one of our state aid runs from, from the state and we kind of jumped at it. We were one of the first in the area to actually offer it. We started with that one class for a half-year program and that went over pretty well. And then we upped it to two, two classes. And then this year, we're currently at four and now we're going to add a fifth class next year. And you can see just, we're going to have about a hundred and five students in our UPK program that is housed at Primrose. So there'll be a hundred and five, which is about two-thirds of our, you know, kindergarten class will be already experiencing Primrose before they even get to kindergarten.
And, and just with that a little bit, as we talked a little earlier about that declining enrollment, the only way that we would be able to provide UPK in our school district would be able to take advantage of space that has presented itself. And our administration and teacher team and Crystalia Main's team has done a great job at Primrose, allowing us to be able to go back and get those classroom spaces over. So now we have a, just a really great spot for our UPK program within our schools. And so again, the, the funds that we receive from the state are typically not enough to have an outside kind of partner provide their own space and the heating and all of that stuff to have it take place at a school. But because we have the schools, we already have, the lights are on and the heat is on, the building is built. So on a great partnership with the YMCA, thanks to that team of leaders there, they've just done a wonderful job connecting and with our teachers in kindergarten. So it is a unique piece. We, I do not anticipate in the coming years that, that number from the state will increase. If it did, we would not be able to add any more sections at Primrose for the UPK program. We are basically pretty much back to capacity of what we would have for our students and things. So that would be, if it came our way, that'd be a discussion we would have to kind of have. We wouldn't have any more space with inside the Primrose campus, so. Thanks, Chris.
A quick question on that.
Sure.
So we're adding another UPK classroom.
Yes.
Right, because there's leveraging declining enrollment. So we're bringing in more kids because say a first grade or second grade is declining in enrollment. But when those new kids being brought in, those extra classes have to go to the first and second grade classes, are there going to be rooms? Still like, if we're bringing in more kids, we're taking away more room for the UPK. We're taking away from the first and second grade classrooms. So now we have the more kids and now we have to move them into the first or second grade. Are we going to have the room for them?
Yeah, we'll have the...
And if not, what do we do? Do we decline those UPK classes?
Right, that would be, if it came to that, there'd be a conversation we'd all have to have here. But, um, yeah, currently, so let's go back even a decade or so. We had section, we had maybe twelve or thirteen sections of kindergarten. Now we have, say, eight or nine. So those used to be twelve or thirteen classrooms for kindergarten, first grade, second grade. Now we're down to, say, eight or nine, so that's where the space has become available. We've repurposed some of those other rooms for like this revenue opportunity at the bottom there is for BOSEs, where we now rent out some of our classroom space to BOSEs. So there used to be, the classrooms just used to be more occupied because our enrollment was much higher, say, a decade ago.
Right, maybe I'm not understanding right. You're, you're explaining it right, I'm not understanding it right. So say we take away, we had eight first grade classrooms, so we take away two of those to fill two more UPK classes. Now those kids in the UPK classes have to go into first grade. So we're just switching them over, those classrooms, or we're going to bring in more kids behind them?
So when the...
How do we make up that room?
Yeah, when the kids go from UPK to kindergarten, there's going to be, at this point, say, eight or nine classrooms available to them because based on our projections for enrollment for kindergarten, we will have those rooms available. We're not, we're not going to be short any rooms.
But if it comes to a point where the enrollment's a little higher, we'll be, we'll be taking away some of the UPK classes?
That's when we'd have to have a conversation if we want to pull back some of the UPK. If we, yeah, if, say, enrollment spiked and we had an additional hundred kids coming in that we thought for first grade or something like that, yeah, we would need space.
Or into the school in general, whatever grade it is.
Sure. But yeah, if we need the space, then we'll have to look at it again and revisit, you know, how we can try to put the program on. But at this point, we're, you know, based on the projections that we just got from our demographic study, we don't envision, you know, there's a couple of little blips, you know, an extra maybe say twenty students here, twenty students there. But for the most part, we're, seems to be pretty steady on our enrollment for the next few years.
Yeah, just want to make sure Ms. Winter and DeBenedetto have what they need.
Of course.
So UPK isn't increasing the number of students we have coming into kindergarten and first grade. It's just that they're coming to our preschool instead of going to somebody else's preschool. But they're all kids that would have been coming anyway.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so it's just monitoring that, but that way we kind of know, because if we saw the preschool numbers increasing, then we'd know that we'd probably have kindergarten and first grade increasing down the road.
Because at this point for UPK, we're going to have a hundred and five slots, but there might be a hundred and sixty applications, which is going to be most of the, you know, incoming kindergarten class in another year or so. So it does give us a little indication, if that number spiked up to two hundred, we need to, we know, we know the following year, kindergarten's going to be a big class. So that would be something that we would look at.
Yeah, starting in like ninth grade, it starts to be where it's like one eighty to maybe two hundred maximum. And then it just on down, basically in our, in our district overall. But you're, so I guess, I mean, the easier way to maybe put it is that right now, if we didn't have UPK in those five rooms, they would be empty.
I'm confident our teachers and our administrators would use those for something.
You would find another use for them, I'd say.
I'm still limping because I need these five rooms, so. Yes, they, they, which we want them to do. There's space there, use it. Use it for the kids, and they have. The other thing I would say to the board also, we talked about future proofing ourselves moving forward. If you remember with our five, our five-year capital review, we talked about category four, the hopes, desires they have. I've worked with the architect team, we've identified two possible spots if you wanted to add a couple of classrooms in there. That's that level four, like nice to have kind of thing. There is opportunity to do that. Not saying we have the need for that right now, but if that was a point, as they came across, that would be a conversation you could have with the sections of adding some classrooms in there to maintain UPK inside of our classroom, school district, our schools proper with that regard. So the reality is, is again, thirty-two classrooms roughly already landed here, you're down about twenty-four now. You've got a, now five of these added back in for UPK. We've got a wonderful experience now with our OTPT, really having a much more appropriate space. So they've used that space very, very well, so, yeah. And again, our demographers are basing our enrollment numbers that Chris just mentioned before on live birth rates. So live birth rates as late as the twenty twenty-two, or twenty twenty-three calendar year, project those forward. We have a yield factor that's identified with the number of live births. We have Westchester, live births in Somers, and then they project it out. Their projected numbers are really quite strong. They're plus or minus, you know, three percent. So those numbers are, have been really much on. So we're not just making up, it's a projection piece that we have based upon live birth rates that we see. And so it's not like, oh, we got to have it tomorrow. We'll know multiple years in advance. So right now, as Chris said before, what we believe we'll see with the next five years, we should be able to maintain the classes at two hundred-ish or no ninety or to last at kindergarten for the next few years based upon the live birth rate and the yield per household, not corn, but kids. And so with that, the reality is, is we do have some time on our hands and they have been very, very accurate. So it's not something happened by accident and so it's, it's all laid out pretty, pretty straight. Thank you, Chris.
Maybe I'll ask the question differently. Basically, in the four buildings, the, the reduction of students are pretty even over the past, say, fifteen, twenty years. There's no particular section of grade levels that it drops more or less? Or the entrance of kindergarten is pretty constant in a way?
Well, at two points, but we do have some grade levels that do peak up. So if you've got a grade level, say, a little bit over two hundred, the grade level...
But not, not to the point that we cannot handle within the building?
Fortunately, that flexibility, it allows us to make those adjustments from year to year. We already know for, let's say, you know, third grade needs to go up next year, the whole another section of fourth grade because that group of kids is just larger. So we need to change a grade to third, fourth. We have the space, we have the room. And the schools, again, are using those classrooms available to provide other opportunities. Even our SAS campus of looking at a space where we're looking at exposing students to world language now in third, fourth and fifth grade. So they have that available to use the space as long as it's available, so, yep.
Yep. We don't need to refurbish bathrooms or things like that.
Uh, we do need to refurbish our bathrooms for sure. And that is in the five-year plan that we'd be looking at our, our capital improvement project, hopefully there across the district. That is certainly something we'll talk about a bit more in detail, so.
So just moving on to the final couple of pages here. One of the goals for this fiscal stewardship element of excellence here was to stay within one standard deviation of the average cost per student among all Putnam, Northern Westchester BOSEs districts. So as you can see here, the, the average for P and W districts is about thirty-seven thousand. We're at thirty-eight thousand, so we're well within that, that one standard deviation of about forty-five hundred. And then the final piece on the bottom there for the maximum tax levy history. Again, this was going back to the last few years where three out of the five, we did not go to the maximum tax cap levy, again, saving taxpayers a little over two point six million dollars. And again, a large, a large reason for that was due to the increase in foundation aid that we received from the state where we were fully, they were fully phasing in that foundation aid that they had not been providing to any district for the last, over a decade or so. had not been providing to any district for the last, over a decade or so. And then on the last page here, we've talked about it a few different times here. And as part of our master capital plan, we're, we're looking at our next kind of bond project where we'd be looking to ask the voters in May of 2025, about a 60 to 65 million dollar project. And then at that time, we'd also be asking the voters to access any remaining funds in the capital reserve fund.
And so as we looked at this one, we'll be seeing the last paragraph there identifies that the reality of basically feathering bonds off and feathering new ones on. So there's resulting in no additional cost to taxpayers. As we spoke with architects and our team was here before, a good portion of this, multiple millions of dollars will be towards repaving, concrete work. We have some roofing work and some of the basically building envelope pieces we need to do. We have a significant upgrade on our fire alarm system. We're looking at as well as some panels on some of our, and some of our electrical area, as well as some unit ventilators, some HVAC, other handling elements, some of our networking areas that we have with some MDF closets and things like that. So basically the really exciting stuff. And so that has to be taken care of. That will be a good portion of the project. If we are able to go ahead and get after changing a little bit of our environment for our faculty and for our staff, where we're looking at the idea about following along with our mission statement about engaging all learners. And so we know absolutely that where students learn, where our faculty teach, and where we support, makes a difference on our kids and the end. And so the idea is to come back and look at designing things specifically for learner engagement. The picture above there, I've had an opportunity to start meeting with some kids. So this is a group of some of our middle schools talking about what would our school, could our school possibly look like to have this be a more powerful learning space for you? So met with some of the students in middle school, high school, and continue going around with our community groups, PTA, and teachers and such. The idea out of that is to speak, specifically speak to the design for learner engagement here. And then what we're hearing and seeing is certainly things such as flexible furniture is already very highly up there, support spaces, things like, you know, the outdoor spaces in particular, our playground areas at our elementary schools, as well as the desire to have a, an improvement here at the middle school level. So we'll be having this driven by the smaller groups, building-based groups. This is the framework. We're asking the, the team to kind of, after brainstorming, we'll line those into there. We'll come back, we'll prioritize, and we'll identify. Basically, next fall, late next fall, early winter of, here's the anticipated requirements we have for the building envelope, all of the areas I mentioned with HVAC and paving and, and some of our water elements, as well as electrical. And then, then the second piece will be, how can we impact the learner engagement in the classroom for the teachers and kids? And so we'll have the ones prioritized there, and then these will be prioritized out, coming out of the billing to the collective board and saying, here's what they've prioritized in their billings. Because as we mentioned before, the, to do the whole five-year improvement plan there with all the category fours was a little bit over 100 million dollars. We're talking closer to 60 million dollars here. So the reality is, is we'll prioritize, bring that forth, and hear the voice in the community and everybody there. So just want to let you know that as we've talked in the past before, this is where we end up going and things, so.
And we do have one, one final video from our architect.
Hopefully he don't have another guy in there again. I would appreciate that. So thanks, Chris.
Typically, a master capital plan is an extensive process to look at the existing building infrastructure and then discuss potential educational needs with, with the school district. It's really important for numerous reasons. One, well-maintained facilities really provide a safe and conducive learning environment for students. Proper maintenance preserve really the integrity of the building and, and really preserves the building for future generations to come. It also upholds the value of the community's assets, reflects positively on the district's reputation, and it shows that you're investing in, in the education of your students for, for years to come. While the district has done a really fantastic job of updating their facilities and maintaining the facilities, like any other, any other component even in your house, things deteriorate, things meet their end of their useful life. And there's a benefit there. Instead of piecemealing it together, and number one, instead of it being a maintenance project, this is actually a capital improvement. And a capital improvement is eligible for state education funding as well. So that, that really is one benefit. The other benefit is really your, your costs. You're getting a better cost with a larger project. You're basically able with the same amount of money to buy more product rather than spacing it out through a few many years. It really shows that we're, we're being, you know, prudent with our financial stewardship, that lay, it really lays the foundation for a sustainable and thriving education environment for, for generations to come.
So you might recall that Mike was here earlier. He presented the five-year building condition survey. And as he spoke there, the, the idea again about looking for this in May of 2025 is something that we continually work on over the coming years, or future years, thinking about how can we go ahead and make sure that our schools are safe for all of our students and faculty. And the piece that, you know, he mentioned there is that it's not necessarily exciting, some of the things we have to do, but we need to. And the other pieces there, especially with the relatively significant increases in construction costs and related materials, delaying something like that has two pretty negative impacts. One, we've talked about in the past before, if we don't time this in the right appropriate way, it can have a significant impact on what is allowable within our tax levy cap. So that can have a negative impact on our revenues. Another one he mentioned is approximately, depending upon the area anywhere, from 35 to 40% of this project will be funded back from the state on a different revenue stream. So it allows us to get to this number, and it's partially picked up directly by having one bond go off, another come on. And then about 35 to 40% is covered by the state revenue coming in from that stream. Other part as well too, is if we delay beyond that, because even we pass in '25, you're talking 2027-ish, is when you're starting to mobilize, you delay it another the year with increased costs, you're easily looking at, and every year you do that, approximately, your buying power, as Chris spoke about before, goes down approximately anywhere from three and a half to four million dollars every year that you wait on that. So again, it's one of those things we'll continue to speak about, but I, I do like the way Mike described it as far as making sure that our investment continues to stay as it is, in a really good place. We minimize the impact on our community, and that's again, the intent of no additional cost to taxpayers now. We fully utilize the opportunity for the state to fund the project at approximately 40%. And then the reality is, we do it in a timely fashion so we don't lose a missed opportunity with this window. So thanks again for getting Mike up there, Chris. I appreciate it.
I'm sorry. I said one more quick question.
Go ahead.
For the capital reserve project, 7 million, right?
Yep, currently.
Where do, if, say we run into issues, where does, or we need, there's some extras that need to be added, where does that money come from?
So for that project specifically, that's capped at that 7 million?
So if we run into issues?
So there are-
In digging and-
There are allowances built into that. Yeah, if we ran into something-
Any unforeseen issues?
Yeah. So we have everything in there with our engineers, architects. There is an allowance in there for earthwork. There's allowance in there for electrical work. There's allowance in there for labor challenges, water. So they all have allowances. If at the end of the day, as we have on every one of our projects, met the number, there's what we call add alternates and say, hey, look, here's a couple of dollars. What's next on the list? We would add to the project. So those numbers are all built into those projects as, as identified with, with the allowances for those areas, depending upon if it's for the turf, if it's for the earth movement. They each have their own allowances. The architects and engineers, as well as our, you know, owners rep, that put in their force as well.
So those would just be like estimates on historical work that they've done?
Um, very recent.
You know?
Sounds very recent. Because that's the part we have, just again, with our, I think Mike spoke to a little bit, but the quality of, of partnership that we have established with different engineers and different teams. We have the same vendor who put in our turf before, who also did the resurfacing it, putting it in now. We have what they did for us and where that number came in, based upon where we're moving forward. And they're putting in projects as we speak today. So we're just next on the list, so.
They put in the percentages, the material prices that go up.
Yes.
Contingencies that they built in.
They factor all that in.
They live that. Yep, yep.
That's all in the bid documents.
Yes.
Yep.
Yep, all in the bid docs. And they're, they're good at what they do. That's their thing. They're very good at what they do.
That's it.
All right. And that wraps up fiscal stewardship for this year.
Well done.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you, Chris. All right, committee and liaison reports.
Our next meeting's up on May 7th. I think the only thing, just another reminder, I lost my note, the belonging event. I think that's still set for the 30th?
Yes.
Yep. The next message, next meeting's going to be first week of May.
The next meeting for communications?
For communications, sorry.
All right. Is that at 8:00?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm just going to put it in my calendar now.
Get it with a placeholder put on for it. So it should be in your outline.
No, it's, it's probably in my board email. But if, if it's not in my, in my personal calendar, then it's not going to exist.
We're only sending stuff to board emails or stuff.
I have to transfer it over and then, yeah. And so policy was supposed to meet this weekend. We're not, we don't have anything to update right now. So we're not having that one. And then West Putt, Westchester Putnam School Board Association, just coming up, anybody that's considering running for school board, brand new, on April 18th, they're offering a free prospective board member workshop. I think that's online. So you can ask Nancy Carrot, Carrot, if you have any, want any information about that. It's a great little orientation there. And then they also offer one for newly elected board members later on. May 1st and 3rd, they're having the Ed Law meeting, and I know Amanda, I think, has signed up for that. I have. May 6th, there's going to be an advocacy meeting. That's also online. If anybody, anybody's welcome to participate in that one. And then June 3rd is going to be the annual dinner and business meeting. And we're, we're encouraged to have as many possible of our board members and some administrators attend. And on their website, there's a voter voice if you're interested in advocacy things. And then I participated in the community conversation on civics that happened yesterday. Amanda was on that too. So you can add on anything if you want. Just watch your email, because they send out a highlights. You'll see it coming from Stacy from Westchester Putnam School Board Association. And then if there's anything to add to that from my notes, I'll send another email to follow up, or if you have specific questions. But the main things that we talked about were the seal of civic readiness and what school districts are offering that and how that looks. Community service requirements. It was interesting, some schools require as much as 40 hours of community service over four years of high school to graduate. That varied. That was a few that did that. Some have some requirements, some do it like we do with, in terms of National Honor Society, or like our IB diploma program requires that. Some of this community service. We talked a little bit about civics instruction and where that takes place in various school districts. Talked a little bit about student involvement in the, in the Board of Education. There are some, some school districts that have a student ex-FCO member that sits on the board, others that have reports like we do. One district, it was very interesting because they had, they do a combined meeting once a year with, they have the student council from the high school, and then if they have student, they have student government in the younger schools too. And so they invite them all to come, and they meet together with the Board of Ed for like the first half of the meeting. And so they all call in together, and then each, each school's student government kind of gives a report to the board. So just different things that were out there, learning about how districts involve their students in civics. I'm not saying one is better than another, just interesting to hear, you know, those different perspectives. And then one topic that came up was about, about, you know, registering, how we, how voter registrations are handled and offering kids voter registration opportunities, which we actually have a policy on that, that was up for our second read today. And then, and, you know, teaching students things about advocacy and encouraging them to advocate for what they want and engaging veterans, those sorts of things. So you can watch for that email. Yeah. I also liked what they had to say with, one, one school district went in and actually had board members go and, and meet with kids in their social studies classes and talk about the budget, like obviously at a, at an older level. But I thought that was really interesting in like how, how the, you know, voting's coming up and, and the role of, of the Board of Education and, and local government and, and civics. So it was an interesting idea.
Thank you very much for the update.
I also had-
You're with the committee? Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry. We had a seat subcommittee last week, centered around the work that has been done ongoing on discipline practices. Susan's worked with teachers, administrators, as well as sharing feedback in the subcommittees and we made, and how she's, they've revamped together the, the systematically, how incidents are tracked, how they're investigated, how kids re-enter school after a suspension. So now in addition to consequences, students are required to have a learning experience around what happened, as well as prep work for mediation. We also discussed work being done in the middle school to create school culture. And they focused specifically in on, on, I guess, what happens in hallways. They found that that was like the most write-ups for incidents. So in, in the fall, they've created a, a document. All the teachers worked on a handbook of sorts so they could break down kind of what positive school culture should look like, how they can reinforce it, and what they're doing well. And they plan on implementing that in the, in the fall to, so that there's common language, common expectations across the, the school to, to try and create a better school culture around. And also finally, we discussed the use of person-first language and being mindful of seeing the child and the behavior, disability, et cetera. Full disclosure, I had to leave early that night because I had to go pick up my kids from the eclipse trip. But, so I wasn't able to hear the whole discussion, but I definitely provided some input on how important I felt first-person language was as in an IEP meeting, for instance, and how it's always important to see the child first and not their deficits or disability or testing numbers. So it's just an interesting way, all in all, important work that's been done this year. And, and last, I guess it's been going on for two years now, some of this stuff, to create systems and processes going forward to be consistent, so.
Great. Thank you all for attending those different meetings and updating us. All right, now we move on to approval of meeting minutes. Let it be resolved that the Board of Education have received copies of the minutes of meetings on 3/26 and 4/9/2024. Hereby approves the same.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, standing, objections? Personnel consent agenda. Let it be resolved that the Board of Education, upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, hereby approves the attached personnel agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Obstacles, nope. All right. CSC, CPSC meeting recommendations. Let it be resolved that the Board of Education, having received copies of recommendations of the meetings as listed on the attached memo, hereby approves the same.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Staying, objections? Nope. All right. Business consent agenda. Let it be resolved that the Board of Education, upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, hereby approves the attached business agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Staying, objections? All right. And the adoption of the 2024, 2025 budget property tax report card. Let it be resolved that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education of the Somer Central School District does hereby adopt the property tax report card and the budget for the 2024, 25 school year in the amount of 110,810,731 dollars. And be it further resolved that the date for the public vote on said 24, 25 Somer Central School District budget be set as May 21st, 2024, from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. at the Somers Middle School.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Staying, objections? All right. Appointment of election inspectors. Let it be resolved that upon recommendation of Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education, Somer Central School District does hereby approve the appointment of chairperson, inspectors, election workers for the annual meeting and election on May 21st, 2024, as per attachment. And be it further resolved that the district clerk shall be authorized to fill any vacancies in these positions which may occur prior to the date of the vote.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Staying, objections? All right. The Bosse's administrative budget. Whereas the Board of Cooperative Education Services of Putnam, Northern Westchester County thereafter Bosse's has proposed its tentative administration budget for the 2024, 25 school year, July 1st, 24 through June 30th, 25. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Bosse's tentative administrative budget for the 24, 25 school year in the amount of 11,596,000 dollars be, and hereby is approved by the Board?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Staying, objections? All right. Elections to the Bosse's Board. Let it be resolved that for, the four- Uh, let it be resolved that four, uh, the four individuals listed below have been nominated as candidates to the BOSI's Board to fill for vacancies for the term July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2027. Somers Central School District hereby approves the following candidates to fill the four vacancies. Uh, Catherine from Garrison, Michael from Peaks Gill, Neil from Croton-on-Hudson, and James from Cold Springs.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstained, objections? Alright, attendance at conference, let it be resolved, Board of Education, Somers Central School District, does hereby approve a request from the Board of Education trustee Amanda Candell to attend the Westchester-Putnam School Boards Association Workshop, uh, ed law essentials on May 1st and 3rd, 2024, at a cost of 50 dollars.
Hmm.
So moved?
So moved.
Thank you. Do you wanna talk about this one a little more?
Promise to share my notes.
If you want a second.
Thank you for.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
This is the longest one to vote on.
It's 50 dollars, it's 50 dollars.
Alright, policy second reading and adoption. Uh, let it be resolved, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education of the Somers Central School District does hereby accept the following revised policies for second reading and adoption. Uh, the 2410, uh, formulation, policy development, adoption, implementation, and review. The 5605 voter registration for students. Uh, 9260, conditional appointment, and emergency conditional appointment.
So before we vote on this, can I ask a quick question?
Do we do, get a motion?
I move first.
Yep.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, go ahead.
So for the voter registration for students, and I apologize for not catching this on the, the first read, but I was just reading through the change, and I'm fine with the change, but the, the sentence after it just seems redundant then with the change, I guess. So it says, "The district will do so by offering registration materials through a required class at different times during the year," which is basically what the paragraph that was added describes. So I wasn't sure if we needed that second sentence. Thoughts? Because basically the change is, "The district will provide students with access to voter registration and preregistration applications during the school year, and assistance with filing such applications. The district will inform students of the state requirements for voter registration and preregistration. The district will meet the, these obligations by offering registration and preregistration materials through their social studies classes at different times during the year, as well as offering in-person registration and preregistration by the League of Women Voters twice a year in school." So I just feel like the sentence then saying, "The district will do so by offering registration materials through a required class at different times during the year," seems redundant.
Yeah, good catch, that is redundant, okay.
Yeah, I don't remember that one. We did discuss to, uh, also talk about in, in these clubs, the student clubs, but somehow that was striked out. Okay.
Um, so it doesn't change the, the outcome of it, should we vote on it now, accept it all?
Can we vote with, saying remove that line?
As amended?
As amended, yeah.
So we're taking out the, uh, 5605 voter registration for students is not being voted on tonight?
No, we can, we can, we'll just say, we're voting on it as amended.
Got it, got it, sorry.
So should we have a new motion to, as, to vote on it as amended, or no? Okay.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Abstained, objections? Alright, we move on to public comment. Alright, uh, all speakers will promptly identify themselves, a maximum 30-minute period, limited to three minutes per speaker. Um, speakers may comment on matters of, uh, public interest involving school operations and programs, but may not criticize or personally attack any individual connected with the school district. No district employees or students may be comment, commented upon or identified by name or situation. Questions asked by the public will be referred to the appropriate staff member for reply at a later date and time. Questions requiring investigation will be referred to the Superintendent for consideration and later response. All written statements shall be given to the district clerk.
Thank you, Alana Safko, I think you know me. Uh, I am here today, I actually wrote something that had a bit of anger in it, and I don't really wanna present that way, so I'm gonna wing it. I wanna talk about maybe the unintended consequences of the culture war around the IB program and the language that has been used repeatedly in this room to describe evidence-free, lack of information, et cetera. The kids are getting caught up in this, I feel like that's an unintended consequence. Um, but I can tell you that a whole bunch of IB kids are feeling like they've gotten caught up in this. They're fighting after last Tuesday's comments. The activity amongst the kids has escalated, it should've gone down. Now, if this board is serious about not deprecating the IB program, I would appreciate that being messaged to the students. I know that the juniors are very frustrated as they approach their final assessments, of how much work they've put in, and still wonder whether or not they'll be entitled to complete the program. That's not fair to them. I also realize that some of you are new to board membership, and this board in particular, and I wanted to make you aware that your posturing and a lot of your language and your positioning is creating a hostile workplace for staff and faculty. The kids are picking up on it, we know the kids are watching a live stream since the culture wars set lights a couple of year, a couple of years back, and they're still watching. So I think it would be very important to not badger credentialed professionals in this room, in this forum. Now I understand for some of you, you're information-seeking, but your words are interrogating, and this is not the place for that. Massive disagreements that you may have with policies and people who are employed by this district should be discussed privately and not harassed and harangued publicly, because you know, when you, and put that together, you create a hostile workplace environment that's going to cause a lot of personnel changes, which we believe that you are intending to cause, and that's gonna cost us all money. It's not gonna help our rankings, which we keep hearing ambiguously are important, but not what to do about it. And it's gonna hurt our kids the way the IB language has. Those are the extent of my comments, and I would call on the leadership of this room to not enable that. That's important. You all represent all of us, we may not all have voted for all of you, but if I didn't vote for you, you still represent me. And a lot of other people. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment? No? Alright, now we move on to, uh, board member comments.
Chris, thanks for putting the budget numbers together, I know it's tedious and thankless, and a lot of work.
Thank you.
Uh, I wanna give just, uh, congratulations to all the kids that were in the play this past weekend. Also, one more note, uh, I think Nancy, for, you just mentioned the votes on the 21st, I know it's a little bit later this year, absentee ballots, is that, uh, when can people request those? I don't know if it's up yet, the form?
People can start requesting absentee ballots next week.
Okay.
After, after the petitions are due, and we know the placement of the names on the ballot.
Okay. Right, I just wanna make sure that.
That's the 22nd?
The 22nd, the petitions are due, uh, they can start requesting them the 23rd.
Uh, oh, one more thing, I know there's the, uh, Lions Club Breakfast this weekend, uh, on Sunday, so I, I've attended a few times, it's a good community event. Uh, worth coming out, uh, if you're available. And that's all.
Uh, thank you to the district for, uh, as we do every year, all of the work into the budget, putting together numbers, collecting information, visiting, um, all the outreach throughout the year to understand what the needs are and, and, and figure out what really makes sense. So, uh, now we put it out there, and it's gonna be up to the, up to the community if you have questions. This has been covered throughout the year, there's a lot of great information out on the website, a lot of the details and the numbers, if you really wanna dive into those, uh, it's, it's good to do so. So the 22nd, uh, new board member, any prospective board members, that's when they're due for their, to have their, um, what, what's it called?
Petition.
Petition, thank you.
Not a second later.
Yes, yes, yes. So if there's anybody, anybody out there of board service, it's, um, I mean ultimately, I'm proud to be up here, I, I think we all are proud to be serving our community, to be supporting public schools, and, um, and that's, you know, a real important part of our community. So if you're supportive of our public schools and, and wanna continue to see them, uh, do well, you know, take a look at that, see if that's something that you can step into. I wanna thank the district, I think all the buildings were very supportive of the eclipse, incorporating some educational opportunities, having some flexibility for students and families to go out and experience it. Uh, I know, I appreciate it personally, 'cause we took advantage of that, and I, I think a whole lot of students and families did, it was terrific. I guess, I, I, one thing I will say, you, you look at the budget, it's, it's very supportive of, of the programs that have been long in development and that have been growing. And, and if, if you look at, you know, we, we get some of our statistics here on, on the advanced classes, uh, the offerings, AP, IB, it goes, it goes beyond that, the dual enrollment, the honors classes, there, there's a lot. And I'm really proud that the district has been making this concerted effort to increase that access and those opportunities. And it's not a one-track line for what the, um, what these advanced courses are. Uh, I, I'm, as a board member, I'm fully supportive of keeping these multiple tracks open, because it gives opportunity for so many different people, that if we narrow that down, that doesn't work for everyone. And so I, I think we keep always looking at it, but I'm, I'm proud that we're able to offer what we offer and that that keeps growing. And, and I'm in support of that, and I, I think if you see what the district's doing, I, I, I don't see that changing, so. I think that's the end of my comment.
Okay, I, excuse me. I also like to thank Chris, this, uh, budget presentation preparations, a lot of good work. I also appreciate the fact that you, you know, take our suggestions, improving graphics and, uh, explanation of the details. And hopefully, uh, our budget will pass as usual. Another point I wanna make is that this past weekend, we had this high school musical. Uh, I had the pleasure to, uh, watch on, on Friday as well, Sunday. And on Friday, the, the, um, auditorium, I think, the 600-seat capacity was completely filled, which is a very good thing. If you missed it, I think you really ought to pay attention to the school activities such as these. And the Sunday was, um, uh, our traditional, very meaningful, uh, performance to invite the senior citizens of the community to, uh, attend. I, I always also attend, because I'm a senior citizen, so, uh, and I also like to, uh, socialize with the senior citizens. But I do find this year actually is a little less than usual, I think usually we have more. Uh, in fact, the weather was, condition was very good, it's not, sometimes can be cold in, in April still. So I wanna, uh, urge the community, particularly the senior citizens, to, to know that this is not that you have to be associated with a student, you know, I am a grandpa or some grandma. This is really for the community citizens, uh, senior citizens, uh, as, thank you note from the school district, we'd really like to invite senior, uh, citizens to, uh, enjoy the student's performance. And that's my message, I wanna say this every time I get a chance to talk about it, thank you.
Alright, um, well, I wanted to thank, um, thank Rachel and the other members who are on the Citizens Finance Committee for the time that goes into that, uh, this was the first year I got to be on that committee, and, um, it's been a very interesting process. And it's really outstanding to be able to hear from, you know, an array of community members, their questions and how those get answered, and how the administrators talk through the budget and really work through decisions, you know, with that community input. So thank you for that time, and all the other members that are on that committee, and to our administration for all the work that goes into putting that together. And then, another point that I just wanted to say is how proud I am of our school district. Um, one of the reasons I ran for the board was because I was proud of the school district as my kids were going through it. And, um, now they're out of it, and I love being able to still hear what's going on, I still have that, um, pride. I just read, um, yesterday, an article, I saw that our district has been recognized by, um, with, it was one of the communities with the Music Education Award from NAMM Foundation. I don't know what that stands for, I'd have to read through the article again, um, off the top of my head, but we were one of only 10 districts in Westchester and Putnam that received that, and last, it was, uh, how many, 975 across the country. So, um, you know, congratulations to our music department, that's awesome. Um, and then the other thing that always resonates with me, being proud of the district, is, you know, when the questions come up about rankings and like, why did we fall down, why aren't we where we are, so, you know, I really, when the recent one came out about the Westchester County High Schools, it's like, okay, local, they, they have 48 school districts that they're working with, let me do a little dig and try to figure out what's going on there. Because when I looked at the chart that they had of information, there were definite things that were inaccurate compared to the facts that we have about our school, so I was like, they don't have the right facts there, but then also, you know, seeing us ranked considerably lower than other districts when our test scores were higher, it didn't make sense. So I looked at how they got it, and I reached out, and I've had some dialogue back and forth by email. Um, and so I wanted to share with board members, because this is, if we're concerned about how our district is represented and people are, are acknowledging, there's some definite inaccuracies going on in this report. And the, um, woman that I corresponded with at Westchester Magazine acknowledged that. Um, the biggest thing being when they, they, a, a large part of what goes into their calculation for rankings is the number of IB, AP, they say IB slash AP courses that a school district offers, and then the student participation rate and their success. However, they only count IB or AP. So all the districts in Westchester and Putnam that have IB also do have AP courses. So actually, every single district that has IB is being slightly misrepresented on here. Um, they only put a disclaimer on the chart for one district, which is Yonkers, indicating that they use their IB courses, but they didn't count AP for them. Um, most of the other districts, that was the same thing, they have predominantly their students participate in IB, so they didn't count their AP courses, but Somers, they only counted, they only listed 17 courses. So this is again data from a couple of years ago, so we have actually more courses even now. But we had 17 IB classes, uh, 17 AP courses, and that's what they used for their data. They completely excluded the 18 IB courses that we offered, and the students that participated in those, and how they performed on their evaluations. So, it, a point of advocacy for me is continuing to email them and try to get them to, at the very least, include a disclaimer, so it's also not just IB that's affected. In their chart, they have a disclaimer, if there's another top-performing school district in Westchester that uses neither, they do something called AT. So they have a disclaimer for that district indicating that their ranking is a little bit lower, because they don't use AB, AP, or IB. But Somers, they completely excluded 18 of our AP, IB level courses, and did not put any kind of disclaimer or notation on that, no credit whatsoever. So, um, point of advocacy, I think the more people that can reach out to Westchester Magazine and ask that they somehow in their evaluations of the school districts that they present, note the accurate information in terms of the college courses, that college-level coursework that we offer. Um, and consider, you know, recalculating their formula to represent that. I think all of us, you know, through our conversations, are proud of offering both options for students. And most of the courses, they're not duplicating, it's, it's unique course experiences that we're offering. Um, so my little plea is, uh, I'll, I'll email you the person's contact information, and, you know, my request would be, if it's something concerning you about how our district is perceived, that we all reach out and ask that they accurately represent us.
Aren't they using also several-year-old data from?
Yes, yeah, there's, there's a lot to it, so they were using, um, the data from, it's 21, 22 is most of the data. Um, but then they also pull some of their data sources from. most of the data. But then they also pull some of their data sources from US News and World Report. Anything that US News used in like their college ready, some of their college readiness index and things, any state test scores that they used was actually, is actually from New York State, they're still using 2018, 2019 data. So also, anything that we have improved over the last few years isn't showing up in any of this data yet. But, you know, that's, for, multiple districts are impacted by that. But we are unique. We are the only district that had half of our college-level courses intentionally excluded from their dataset with no acknowledgement.
Thanks for looking into that.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Did a good job. Thank you. Thank you for everyone who came out tonight, sharing with her comments. It's greatly appreciated. I'd like to give a little shout out to the fourth grade girls lacrosse team. They had a great win up in Arlington this past weekend. Along with the seventh and eighth grade girls had a big one over Yorktown. Big congratulations to them. And I heard that, I didn't make it to the play, but I heard it was, I heard it was a good one from multiple people. So congratulations to the Thespians. And again, thanks for all for coming out.
Oh, I forgot. One more thing. There was, the girls softball parade is Saturday morning at nine, and I think their game, the girls varsity game's right after that.
Okay. I just want to also say thank you to Chris and Ray. I know how much, being on the Citizens Finance Committee, I know how much work we've all put into these budget presentations. And I'm so appreciative of all the feedback that you've taken in. And Rachel, thank you for coming and speaking tonight on behalf of the Citizens Finance Committee and representing the work that was done in there. I also like to say congratulations to the cast and crew of the Addams Family. I heard it was wonderful. Unfortunately, I was away at a Taekwondo tournament, but, and so I had to miss it, which I was really, really bummed about. And I also had in my, in my list of congratulations to our music program, as we were one of eight Westchester County School Districts, 10 of, if you can count Putnam, and one of 975 school districts nationwide to receive award for best communities for music education by the NAMM Foundation. The award recognizes outstanding efforts from teachers, administrators, parents, students, and community leaders to make sure students include music as part of their education. And I think this is not the first year that we've won this award, if I'm not mistaken, but it's, kudos to the music department. It's a wonderful program. And I just want to say, I too am proud of our school district. And thank you Heidi for doing all of that data digging, by the way. I know I've said it before at prior meetings, but I think it bears repeating that there are multiple pathways for students to reach graduation and while following their passions. And I think that came out very evidently from the students last week. I think it was that they are more engaged when they can pursue their passions. That was really what resonated with me. And I was so appreciative of the students coming and speaking honestly to what their experience at the high school and the programs. And I think Dr. Blanch and the Learning Office would agree that the intention is to keep these multiple pathways, whether it be, and I'm gonna go off on a list again, but full IB diploma, IB classes, AP classes, a mixture of AP and IB classes, Regents classes, honors classes, Project Lead the Way classes, science research program, BOSI's classes, art classes, music classes. We have the goal program, the early childhood education program, the athletics program, the mission of our school district is to ignite passion in all learners. And I think you can clearly see it when I read through this binder, and I promise Chris I read all of it, that this is clearly what you can also see is also included is supporting students' needs to make sure they can access curriculum, whether it be co-teach classes, skills classes, academic support center, other tiered interventions that are, go throughout our school district. And I think this budget supports that philosophy. And I would never support removing any of these pathways for any of the children. And I think that needs to be said frequently and out loud. And I hope that other board members feel the same. But that's just what I wanted to be clear. And I think this budget does a really good job of supporting all of these programs for all of our learners K through 12. So.
Great. All right. I will start a little different, different order here. On the advocacy side, thank you for doing all that research on that. Again, with all the advocacy requests we do get, I think that is something that the board should be actually going after and communicating on, whether we do that jointly as a board or we do that individually and hammer with different things. But getting that ranking up is something that's definitely going to help us out. Chris, you already got a lot of acknowledgements on this, but not to underscore the value of, you know, what the whole administration, you know, has done between Chris, Ray, you know, the principals and all the other administrators and teachers actually participating in this budget, you know, over time and coming up with different ideas. In order to fight those headwinds that we've had and we've shown, you know, with the, you know, rising, you know, interest rates, the increasing healthcare and, you name it, but it's been monstrous, right? And being able to see that still go down. So nice work all around and thank you everybody on that one there. I unfortunately missed last week's meeting. I was away at work on the IB stuff. Look, there's a couple of things I'll say there. You know, I appreciate both sides and everybody coming out and offering and coming up with their suggestions and opinions or concerns or questions on that. You know, I think it's healthy, right? That's what the board meetings are for, is for some of those concerns to be come up and have the discussions. And board members are actually here to be inquisitive, right? None of this stuff happens behind doors. We're not allowed to. It's a public session. This is a board meeting. It's not just a presentation. It's not a presentation for the actual town and everybody. So we should be asking those questions. I want to encourage that and also the feedback from the community on that. With that said, look, I will say that, look, IB, I can't foresee, I don't think it's not, it's not going away anytime soon. Or not, not that I'm suggesting that it goes away at all. I do see the multiple pathways between people have AP and IB and they could choose between them. Removing a kid shouldn't be fearful of disappearing anytime soon, right? It's the, for us to remove that and replace that, you know, we want to be able to keep all these different advanced coursework's in there. If we were going to replace that out right now, that would be a monstrous, monstrous cost that I don't think anyone wants to, you know, take on right now. Nor I don't think it would be actually a good idea in the long term to actually get rid of that, especially at that level there. Look, it does highlight a couple of different things though, right? With a lot of these questions here, you know, that have been coming up. I think, and it's not for lack of trying, right? I think we've offered up a lot of different, you know, things with the administrators and trying to get awareness out there about IB and what it is and what the value is on that. And we've offered up many avenues for conversations. Some of them, maybe it's the, you know, we need to improve our messaging. Some of it's maybe on just, you know, deaf ears on that. I don't know what the actual thing is. But I do also see internally as a board, I think collectively, we need to actually take a look at how do we manage some of these conversations differently, right? So I'll use reading curriculum as something that we've done a review on. Over the past couple of years, right, we've actually changed our reading curriculum, right? And this is an audit that was done over X period. So we do audits of the, our building over amount of years. And, you know, Chris feel free to help me out, but we do the HR audits, we do accounting, right? Just like that. We should probably be doing audits of our different systems, whether it's our reading curriculum, math curriculum, IB, AP programs and taking a look at that and supporting that over, and just measuring it, but supporting that over whatever, it's a three or five-year period, right? I'd like to see us start getting to that and then reevaluate it, you know, in depth, in that three or five-year period to make sure that, hey, we're still heading on the right path. Does the research and data show that we should be investing in AP, IB, math, whatever the common core, whatever the tools that we're using, but looking that at that, those different frequencies and then measuring it over that time period. What I'd like to get away from is the year-over-year changes, you know, and just looking at it every single year. So that's something I think I'd challenge the board to think about as far as how do we sit there and do that? How would we inspect some of these things? What that cycle might be to say, hey, look, do we take a look at some of these programs over a certain time period? Ray, I know you guys are probably doing it, right? But maybe it's different involvement with the board and getting that sponsorship from the board on that. I think that's it, actually. Not very good closing, but anyway, again, thank you all for tonight and for everything.
I'll go ahead and close it out. I think Gomez is in the office and I think there was a great performance with you and Martisha. I'm not sure if we should do the dance again, but that was, I don't want to step on your toes. Well done, Sonny, young man. That was really a pleasure to see you. It was good. The camaraderie amongst the kids on the stage and the kids behind was wonderful. And so I thank you greatly so much for making an impact on everybody that was there. I hope you got lots of thanks as a member of the team there as well as everybody else. But I know even just over in my space, we got a couple of messages that you guys are doing such a great job. So, thank you. The other piece I had, in front of the board members, and I think there's a few that, this might pass around to the folks that are still with us this late hour. If on that document you put our mission and vision on the first side, I asked you to take a, just a peek at that. And again, we've referenced our mission again a few times tonight and our vision work as well. And so over the last, you know, year or so, we've been working on this idea about executive functioning. And so this idea about, thinking about ready, do, done, and starting with done. So in this regard, thinking about done, it's, there's always room for improvement. But if we are looking, as we spoke just a moment before, about AP and IB results, you have that sitting right in front of you, board. You have that sitting right in front of you over the last five years, the historical performance of our children, for example, in our IB courses. Over that time, you can see that rate of increase there. I have to tell you, if my small 403B account had that rate, I would not be sitting here today. So you can see that number of increase. And I would say both these folks, the kids that are sitting for an AP exam, every single one of those AP exam areas has increased. Social studies, English, math, and science. IB, the number of seats have also increased as well, to the point that they have doubled over that time period. And as Amanda said earlier before, we have Project Lead the Way onboard. We have our Regents' experiences. We have many dual enrollment classes. Also during that time at the, on the Foreign Excellence USC, the performance of the children, while we have increased 20% or so in our AP program, our performance has stayed the same. Roughly 80% of our kids are scoring three or higher, yet we've increased the percentage to 25. So if you want information, board, if you want to see that, you have that in front of you. You have that in your Foreign Excellence document. So I thank the Learning Office for their continual look at all of our programs in these areas. So it is there. It's not something that is new to the enterprise of what we've been doing. Now I want to go to the other side. So this is this kind of idea about what do we have to do to get to the done. This represents our engaging our students, following our mission statement, engaging students at a personal level to ensure they do find that success. Last time I spoke about that double-headed coin, access and belonging. Access, we've created that we're doing that work. The framework, though, we've approached it is looking at affective behavioral and cognitive engagement. The strategy, embedded honors. That includes every ninth and 10th grade child in our schools, as you see back to the 16, 17 school year, the percentage of kids that had at least one honors class in 16, 17. And then you flash forward to last year, 22, 23, because that year was closed out. The increase there. Once again, I would say if this was your investment portfolio, you, which is, as educators, this is our investment portfolio, I don't know what better evidence of growth that I can demonstrate. And to the point, looking at this, this doesn't impact one group of students. This information is broken out by demographics. If you look at some of our typically underrepresented students, you will see significant growth in those underrepresented students. I would challenge anybody, anybody, to find a better place and a better improvement than what our teachers have created and our administrators have created for our children. And again, by the way, over that time, tan period, if you go back to that note on the front page, we have doubled, doubled our participation in that, what does done look like? The ready, we have to have our teacher support training. We have to have our instructional support specialist data support training. We have to have our Learning Office looking at curriculum documents, looking at our curriculum mapping. We have to have teams coming together, talking about best instructional practices. What can we do to support our children day in, day out within the classrooms? Again, as far as evidence goes, that's all I got. That's all the team has. But I can't think of a better place to show you than, again, it's always been in our Foreign Excellence. It's not over one year. Again, you can see that's over multiple years that we've gone from. Our next step, our next desire, I think as Amanda kind of tipped the hat a little bit there, we believe that our children in our school district, to create that embedded honors, our special education team, along with our teacher team, who supports special education children, as well as students who are kind of in general classrooms, we have to look at our CO-TALK classrooms. We have CO-TALK classrooms in each one of those ninth and 10th grade embedded honors for social studies as well as for English. Our desire, our goal, our intent is to do the same for 11th grade and 12th grade for English. We believe, we have evidence, we have research, we have inside the district that we can ensure that experience for as many more of our children who can reach that bar going to perhaps an IB or an AP course. It's their choice. But we believe that by creating a space of access and belonging, that our children's were improved. So again, I would say if, I don't know what more information I could reside. Again, I think it's on page 24 of the most recent report that the Learning Office gave out before in the year, sorry, 38, of the increase of total of IB students back in 2019 was 133. Last year, we closed at 177 students who were taking the IB component there. And if I look at our total AP students, 249 to 316. Oh, and by the way, we were talking about declining enrollment before, we're doing it all when we got less kids. So more kids, more access, and more pieces across the board. So we can go on. There's a lot of amazing things our educators are doing at that high school. And I just wanted to close on that. And again, we've heard from our students speaks about how impactful it has been to them and even just being part of some of the things that are here at this building, getting ready for students. I think it's worth mentioning again, we have more students next year enrolled in AP isolation or IB courses than we have ever had in the past. And then, by the way, the students who have expressed interest in the International Backstory Program has doubled. We have 31 children who were interested in rising juniors to participate in that program. And I couldn't be more proud of our faculty and staff. So, thank you.
Dr. Blanch, this charts are beautiful. I have two questions I want to leave for thinking.
Sure.
The curves, let's do the first one. The first one was all these comparison IB and AP. I noticed the science curve is, the slope is lowered, smaller than the rest of it.
For AP or IB?
Yeah.
AP.
Yep.
It's just for AP, right?
Right. And so what I would also point out, again, what I didn't put on there, I was, did not put our Project Lead the Way courses.
No, I just want to leave that as question.
Can I finish?
I don't want to analyze.
I missed this. I want to finish it. Our Project Lead the Way courses and biomedical sciences are just shooting through the roof. And those are dual enrollment courses. So I, you're correct, I did not put that on there.
Fine. I would like to get the answer later on somehow.
Sure.
The other chart on the other side is that the IEP, I assume the color is, IEP slope is steeper than the rest of the curves, right?
You bet it is.
Yeah. That is something that I've always been, you know, sort of concerned, why in our schools or in the whole country, we always have sort of IEP numbers keep on going up, okay? That's a big problem. It's not our...
That's not what that's showing.
That's not what this, that's not what that's saying.
This is showing students with IEPs.
Who are participating in an honors class.
Participating in these high-level classes.
Ah. Is that?
Good slope.
That's a good slope.
That's a good thing.
I would challenge you to find another school district that is doing that for us.
Then the other one is, I want to also notice, the male and female, I want to urge our male students to catch up.
And so I would point out that the male student's slope is extremely strong from where it was before. They are...
But it's below the females.
They are closing the gap. At the gap, the differential between the two, pretty imposed is close.
Anyway, that's my observation. Quickly, I'll go back and study more.
That's great. And Heidi, I'm going to go back to what you spoke about here. The rankings are not built for Somers School District. You mentioned before about a couple of our school districts that are AP and IB. Those school districts might have two, possibly three AP courses to their 18. We have a full slate of 20 IB courses and 18 AP. That's a combination of 38 courses. Those school districts are not. Amazing school districts doing awesome things for the community and the kids. Just the system, the ranking, was not built for this school district. We have really powerful both experiences as well as things like Project Lead the Way, like I think he was talking, talking about our sciences area and stuff. So, or our science research pieces with our kids who, we've got three kids out, two kids out in California for the statewide, or the nationwide competition for science. So it's not built for it.
Yeah, no, and they made it clear to me that it wasn't, it wasn't because it was inferior to offer both, but it was for their data analytics. It's much easier for them to just use one or just use the other. And that was the reason why they did it that way, not because they were saying it was better. And that's why my biggest thing I'm asking for is if that's the way they're going to do it, then they need to put a disclaimer or something that explains that, just the way they did for some of the other top performing districts in the county that, you know, that have things that mitigated their scores too.
Or they need better analysts.
Or better, yeah, better.
They put more work into it is what the problem is.
All right. Let it resolve that this regular meeting of the Board of Education be adjourned.
So moves them.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.